Not just today, but twenty-five, well, let's say, let's be generous. Twenty years' worth of increased flight noise from O'Hare. And so now you are again giving me and the other residents of this town the brush-off by not addressing what's going on.
All right.
Mayor, if you'd like, I can, I can offer one final response on that. It's also very important for the council to recognize, this is the FAA's noise contour. It is their environmental impact statement that was approved in the year 2005. This is not new information. It's been available to everyone. But we, at your invitation, wanted to review all of this for you so that everyone is aware that this new runway is coming next year. We very much want you to have the information that you're looking for.
The OMP has also requested that the FAA do an interim analysis for the interim basis. So we are requested, as you mentioned.
Alderman Shockey. All right. Hold on. Alderman Shockey, go ahead.
Yeah, when we moved here forty years, forty years ago, we knew the airport was there. We didn't know the jets were coming, though, not to the extent that they are. But I have two basic questions. You mentioned about this being so long, and that's where the arrivals are coming in mainly. And this one is shorter, and that's where departures are. Now, in, in just practical experience, planes coming in don't make as much noise. We, we live about right there. And we, it's beautiful. You see these lines of lights lined up like a pearl necklace out there, coming in. And they make very little noise. Well, I sit in my living room and watch them one after another. But it's late at night, when I'm falling asleep or have just fallen asleep, when planes are taking off here and swerve south, and we can be in the basement. And we sit there and, and kind of tense up, is it gonna hit us? I mean, is it, it's that close, is it gonna hit us? I don't understand why this isn't wider here, and this isn't wider here, when you're telling us that fifty percent of the departures at night are off of, off of this runway, and they don't go straight out. They, I mean, once, some are going to Minneapolis or Milwaukee, some are going down south. So they curve way off of there. And this is, doesn't make any sense to me. Now, maybe you can explain it, but I don't understand why you're saying that the arrivals should take more space than departures, which are, the engines are straining like crazy.
Alderman, I think that's a very good question. So, the lobe to the east is very large because they're nighttime arrivals. And as I mentioned before, every nighttime flight gets a ten decibel penalty. So nighttime departures get the nighttime penalty, but so do the nighttime arrivals. What's different is that here, in this, and on the east side of the airport, the arrivals are always in the same place. And so those, those nighttime flights that are lining up exactly in line, as you described, they're, they're happening over and over and over on the same spot. And so that's why this goes out so far to the east. What's different on the west side of the airport, you are correct. This, this graph, you're reading the graphic correctly, where it talks about this runway, ten left, twenty-eight right, receiving, or projected to the use fifty percent for the nighttime flights. What's happening is they're getting the ten decibel penalty, but those planes are fanning out. Some of them are going straight, some of them are turning here, turning here, or they're doing the reverse, they're turning to the north or going this way. And what's happening is, because the planes are fanning out, the noise is getting spread out, and that's why that portion of the noise contour is wider, as opposed to on the east side, where it's very consistent arrival path and it's very narrow.
The second part of my question is about those noise things. When you're talking about sixty-five decibels, we don't get a lot of them that cross over this way. But when we get one, it's one hell of a lot louder than sixty-five decibels. Now, how do they, do they take three planes that come that way at night, and the rest of them go the other way, so they average it out while it's only twenty decibels?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's correct.
That's correct. And Alderman, I will tell you that in the noise world, it does get confusing, because noise is on a logarithmic scale. It's not linear. It's not like you take seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, you add them up, divide by three. That's a linear average. It doesn't work like that in noise. The noise scale is logarithmic. So you're talking about ten to the one, ten to the two, ten to the three. You're talking about factors of ten. And so when they use these nighttime averages, the louder planes really weighed it very much towards, towards the louder readings. So you're correct. There are nighttime flights that are above sixty-five decibels. What happens is they all get averaged out, and so this is the line that represents the yearly average, taking into account the runway uses that were predicted, as well as the daytime/nighttime factor.
Alderman Coles.
As you know, I come to the meetings once in a while. My, my thing is the engines.
Okay.
Okay? The planes that are freighters have no restrictions on the engines. And planes that fly with passengers have restrictions to cut the noise down. And I had a friend of mine that worked for, that Japan Airlines, as a freight engineer, putting the freight in the plane, making sure that every space in that plane was taken. So the planes were fully loaded. So when they, always flown, flown at night. So they always took off at night. And they would scream, because they had so much weight in them, to get up. And he says that if they don't load them fully, fully loaded, when it gets to Japan, they get a, they get penalized by, by the Japan Airlines for not having the plane fully caught. And I mean, he, he says they, they jam stuff in them. So he says, the planes have to have no afterburners on them, no restrictions on the engines, and that's why they scream. And it's usually always the freights, freights that are going out, that are the ones that are the loudest that take off. And they always take off at night. And I live where all these other people live, and it's pretty bad. And I've seen, I, I can tell you the airlines, 'cause I've been waved by people in the windows when they take off, that's how low they are to passengers. And I can, and I've been, since I was on that, in that committee, I've been talking about, when are we gonna have some soundproofing in our houses and our windows in our houses on the south side of Irving Park? And they, they keep telling us, it won't be for two, three years, four years. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty, pretty tough to, to tell the people that they ain't gonna have anything for four years, until all the runways that are done on that side in order to get anything done. And then by that time, once they get the runways in, you know what they're gonna say? Huh, we don't have to do it. We're done. We got the property, we got the land, we got the, we got the runways in, we don't have to do it. And that's what's gonna happen. Maybe I'm wrong, but I, I, I'm, I foresee that's what's gonna happen. Just to say thanks for the, the north side and the south side.
Mike, you wanna go next?
Is there a reason they're closing those two runways? Because those two runways both run over industrial parks. And at three in the morning, I get, I get the aircraft, the heavy aircraft, coming over my house. And feel free to put it in, in my backyard, 'cause for fourteen years, I've never had anybody come to my house and do anything. And I can count out the rivets on the bottom of the plane. So, yeah, if you have an answer to why they're taking those two runways out when they're perfectly, where you said you're supposed to be putting them over industrial parks?
Right. Alderman, you're talking about the two yellow runways? Yeah, I, I do have an answer for you. So, one of the most important goals at O'Hare, with this entire O'Hare modernization program, is to get the runways from being crisscrossed. This portion of the airport, the north airfield, is a product of the nineteen forties and fifties. When O'Hare was Orchard Field, it was a Douglas aircraft manufacturing site, and then the military got it. This old design of these runways in a triangle shape, you know, it, it really is not efficient for today's use of the airport. And so one of the, the whole point of the OMP is to remove the runways that are intersecting and get more and more of them parallel. And so that's why, when we're done, we'll have the six runways that go to the east-west, and we'll still have two runways for those, those days when the weather and the winds necessitate it.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't know what causes it either, but there's also excessive wind blowing from the planes. It blows the trees, like it's tropical storms coming sometimes, and you get a high-pitched jet whistle come through. So I don't know what they can do. It's very annoying.
Actually, most of the residents that spoke were all on the south side of Irving, they were all on the south side. I'm actually the closest Irving Park. I can sit in my backyard and I can tell you, within thirty seconds to a minute and a half, there's either one going to the north of me, right over me, or to the south of me. I don't know, it's not, I'm not gonna say it's every Saturday or every Sunday, but I notice it quite often. But again, that's, that's one of the reasons why I wanna talk to the congressmen. Supposedly, they're the ones that can get these air traffic controllers to turn these planes over the industrial parks and whatnot. And we'll see who that is next week.
Mayor, if I could, there, there is one important piece of good news that I, that we would like to share with you. We have been receiving updates from American Airlines at the Noise Commission for better part of two years now. American Airlines has made a very serious commitment to upgrade its aircraft fleet. The aircraft that they've been using for decades is what's called the MD-80, and it was an old McDonnell Douglas aircraft. A couple of years ago, they announced their, and, and that aircraft happens to be a gas guzzler. They are replacing those aircraft because it is not fuel-efficient. But the nice thing for all of us in the noise world is that not only is it perhaps a more fuel-efficient plane, it's a lot quieter. So, United has announced its intentions of replacing those MD-80 aircraft with Boeing seven thirty-sevens. They're gonna be much newer aircraft. We are, we have had probably two or three updates from the American Airlines folks. They often attend Noise Commission meetings. And we can tell you that, since they started this, it used to be somewhere around three hundred flights a day were American Airlines with the MD-80. Now we're down to about a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty per day. So they've already replaced half the fleet that was flying into O'Hare with quieter aircraft. And, and that's good news, and we certainly want all of you to be aware of that.
Yeah, if I remember right, at one of the meetings, I, I heard that presentation, I think it'd take another three years to get all those planes out?
Yes.
Alderman Zar, go ahead.
That was basically my question, was about the aircrafts themselves. You know, besides what you just mentioned, is there any studies or anything going on as far as quieter planes? I mean, you know, we do appreciate the millions of dollars that are being spent on soundproofing our homes. Again, we can't soundproof our backyards, but what about the planes? Besides what you just mentioned, is there any studies going on as far as changing the designs of the planes or the sounds of the planes?
Mayor Moll, the chairperson of the O'Hare Noise Commission, she is part of Partner and the Next Gen Advisory Committee. And there are different groups that come together with aviation experts, as well as stakeholders, to discuss issues as far as new fleet. And Next Gen is also something that's in the works for air traffic control to modernize their control system. Am I speaking correctly? Yeah.
Alderman, if I could add, I can tell you that a major milestone was achieved in the year 2000. In nineteen ninety, Congress passed a federal law and required the aircraft manufacturers to upgrade their engines. And the aircraft manufacturers and the airlines had to have that done by the year 2000. So what happened was, we used to have what are called stage-two engines, and then by 2000, they all had to have stage-three engines. That was a major improvement in the engine noise itself. Noise from the aircraft not only comes from the engine, but it comes from the literal, the vibration or the humming of the aircraft mainframe itself. And there are many scientists and professors around the country that study all this. I can tell you, in terms of United States federal noise standards, I think for a time being, we've plateaued in that Congress has not yet required further improvements in aircraft engine noise. They, there's such a thing as a stage-four engine, but the United States has not yet adopted that and required the airlines to upgrade their engines from stage-three to stage-four. It is discussed in the scientific community, and the airlines and the engine manufacturers themselves, like GE, Pratt Whitney, and Rolls Royce, Rolls Royce, the companies that make aircraft engines, they're very much aware of this. And so the, the answer to your question is, yes, there are people in our field, not on the airport side, but on the airline and the aircraft engine side, that do study this quite a bit. And if you're interested, we can certainly get you connected with some of those studies or the literature that, that's being produced, and that way you can explore that topic further.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'd like to see that. And then also, I'd like to encourage everyone to write to their congressman, and let's get these stage-fours engines a law. And I think that would be the only way to do it, is to write to our congressman. Thank you.
Alderman Woods.
Thank you. Hi, Aaron, thanks for
Hi, Alderman.
...coming out. Two questions. I'm gonna back up to slide twenty-seven.
Okay.
A lighter topic. And I'll go back to the, the other slide. But when you said that you're squaring off the blocks, I'm looking at the map.
Yes.
Would say that Central Hemlock, Ash, and maybe Edgewood, at least Central Hemlock and Ash, don't seem to be the recipient of the block squaring.
Okay. I think I see what you're seeing, Alderman, so I'm gonna go to the screen and make sure.
Go ahead.
Alderman, are you talking about Central Hemlock and Ash north of Commercial Street? Yes. Okay. So, I believe, Alderman, that those blocks were previously done in Wooddale, and I think the blue dots that we're seeing are some straggler homes, that because they're inside the noise contour, they're still eligible. Because I can see here, the majority of them are already done, my sense is that these are straggler homes. Either the homeowner that lived there at the time declined the sound insulation, or perhaps the, the homeowner was there that didn't want it, and now maybe there's a new homeowner. So because they're still inside the contour, those homes are still eligible and will be for the next year or two, as we keep going. At any time, anybody that declined in one year and you're in the noise contour, you're still eligible, and we'll, we'll put you in the next program. I think, though, that this is a little bit more the exception. I think it's the new entire blocks that you're seeing that's really the, the phase sixteen. But we have those additional homes so that all of you can see that there are some homes on previous blocks that are still eligible.
Okay, thank you. Now, going back to, is that slide twenty-nine? With all the beautiful runways, or which one has the noise on it? Slide twenty-eight. Yeah, yeah, slide twenty-eight. The one that's, you got the decibel contour. So if I understand all this correctly, that contour is the brainchild of the FAA and their EIS study of what would be a proposed contour of the area when the airport's fully built out?
Yes.
Okay. So then my first question is, how, how do we determine who's eligible for sound insulation and those things if we look at that contour and it really doesn't have any relationship, at least today, to real-time and space? How, how are we making all those decisions?
Let me back up. Can you show me the overview slide with the contour? That's a good question, Alderman. I'm gonna go back to the screen at the beginning. Keep going. Yeah, no. Yeah, that one. So Alderman, when the O'Hare modernization program was approved in 2005, you know, all of us thought, wow, we have to sound insulate six thousand homes, that's, that's quite a task. So what's happened over the years is, we've identified a group at a time. And as I mentioned, we sort of identify a thousand or so at a time. I can tell you that the first, and we're trying to do them in the order that the runways were coming online. I can tell you that the first neighborhood we did was this neighborhood right here in Displanes. And the reason why is because this was the first runway built. And so the FAA's goal for us at the airport is to get those homes sound insulated before the runway comes online and before the noise impacts are there, because this is a future projection. Once we got that neighborhood done, we then did some homes over here and some homes over here in Wooddale, because this runway extension was happening. And it may not seem intuitive, but what happens is, as this runway got lengthened, it's already starting to help this runway, and this runway is already existing, and now we have a third runway, all in parallel. And so what happens is, now that you have more traffic lanes, everybody is able to move more, and so you're seeing an increase in the, or what we call delay savings. There, I mentioned that one of the reasons why we did the O'Hare modernization program was to uncrisscross the runways, the other was to reduce delays. Before we did the O'Hare modernization program, O'Hare was notorious around the country. If you had flight delays at O'Hare, it affected the whole country. And so we're very much trying to reduce and eliminate those flight delays. So, one of the reasons why we did Wooddale one in the early years is because we knew that once this runway came online, and the FAA had three runways available for arrivals and departures, we knew that there was gonna be incremental changes happening. And so that's why we move it around every year. Jeanette, can you go to the slide showing the regional groupings with the different colors, the box with the phase fifteen, sixteen, seventeen?
You can, let me, let me ask, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, good.
Let me ask this in an effort to try to figure out. So, given the fact that the FAA created that in their EIS study, the noise contour, are you making the statement that as we get closer to completion, the noise patterns will start to mimic what that contour says? Or is it, at least that's the hope, that that would be, let's say, a ninety-five percent model? Obviously, it's not gonna be perfect, as we've heard many people. And I'll throw my house in there, too. And I won't tell you how many times I called, we'll, we'll save some time.
Yes, Alderman, you are on the right track. So, again, it's very, I know it may seem confusing, but the, the sound insulation we're doing is in anticipation of future noise impacts. And so we often talk about in Noise Commission meetings, this is a future contour, these are future conditions, and we're doing sound insulation in advance of these runways coming online. And so when the EIS was completed, this line, being the sixty-five DNL of the build-out conditions, represented the sixty-five decibel level all the way around the airport when all of those runways are present. Now, as I mentioned earlier tonight, there were actually three noise contours in the EIS. The first two were sort of what we call interim noise contours. They were, because the OMP is a multi-year construction program, the FAA determined that it was necessary to show noise impacts along the way. But for purposes of sound insulation, the FAA has us working on the end goal. And so it's only the build-out, the third noise contour, which is the build-out noise contour, that we use for sound insulation.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Alderman, use your voice.
All right, first of all, I want to thank you for coming out and explaining the program. I, I have a couple of questions really quick here. Obviously, there's houses being done in Wooddale, three hundred and eighty-six. Unfortunately, it is in my ward, because we do get affected. You could go down her street, and it's a staging, red lights, camera. My question to you is, first of all, we, as a city council that's set up here, we do not pick or choose what houses are eligible for this program at all. So I wanted to make that perfectly clear, that we do not decide. FAA decides it, because they fund the program and they put it together. They award a contract to people, that's how the program goes. Once that contract is awarded, then they'll notify the people, and we would go onward. All the city is liable for is that they have to pull permits to make sure the work is done, quality and everything else. And our inspectors inspect that. That program has been exist in, in this town. So I just wanna make it perfectly clear out there that this is what. I also sit on this committee with Joe to attend these meetings. I think the FAA has done a pretty decent job beginning sound installation through everyone that's affected all the community. My question to you, going back to those houses that were not sound installation and that are still eligible, do we resend them a letter? Or, or how, how do you work that?
Go ahead, Aaron.
We actually have a couple of choices, Alderman. When, sometimes we send invitation letters to a home and we never hear back. So we might send two or three letters, and then eventually we just stop sending letters because clearly the home either doesn't want it or whatever reason. And we make a note in our database that says the home never responded. If they call today, and they say, I live here, and we look it up in the computer, and it's sure enough, it's in the middle of the contour, we can get them signed up. Sometimes we hear back from the homeowner, and they're very clear with us, no, I don't want the doors and windows. Or they say something, I've, I went to your showroom, I saw your doors and windows, I am not satisfied with that product, I don't want those doors and windows in my home. And we say, okay. Because everybody that signs up, it's at the option of the home, it's at the option of the family. We are required to offer sound insulation, but it's up to every homeowner to decide if they want the sound insulation. And of course, again, it's all at no cost to the homeowner. From time to time, and we did this with the 2007 program year, which was earlier in the, in maybe three or four years ago, we went back and re-invited a big group of homes at the same time. And the residential committee, we made a recommendation that we thought that was beneficial, and the recommend, the residential committee approved that. And, and that's what we did. I think, once we finish the primary, the, the boxes up there in the bottom half that you see for phase fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, I do envision that we'll do another mass mailing to all the remaining homes and have what I call a last call, basically saying, we believe we finished all the homes for all the families that indicated they wanted sound insulation. We are notifying you that we are looking for the final homes, please contact us immediately. So it really depends. If we didn't hear from them, if we did and they, they definitely said no, they can call today, or in probably a year or two, we'll probably send them another mailing.
Yeah.
And, and if you'd like, we can coordinate that with the village.
That's fine. The other question is, and I noticed the list that we received, we have some houses that are in foreclosures, and some houses that I know for sure they already had put windows in, because I did knock on these doors. My question to you, those three hundred and eighty-six homes that we are entitled, that Wooddale was entitled to, say, twenty or forty of them don't get it, say, opt out, in the, the foreclosures, I don't know how we're gonna work that yet, I know you, you've been working at. Does those houses get reestablished in Wooddale, or do those houses go somewhere else in Parkridge or somewhere else? If we are entitled, three hundred and eighty-six homes, that, that, that's what they said, I would think that we will be entitled to three hundred and eighty-six homes, that we will find other homes in our community to do.
Within the noise contour.
Right.
So can we go back to?
And I totally understand, that falls back into those houses that were op- that were opt out or we didn't get hold of. Those 386 homes that we are entitled for this phase, if you notify those people that, again, they should be entitled to the contour. Am I correct, Colonel?
Uh, yes and no. There are definitely 389 homes that we've identified with blue dots and we've counted them. My staff and my consultants have literally gone in the neighborhoods and we've worked with Wooddale Community Development to make sure that we've got the list of address correct. I will tell you, though, that we treat this as a first come, first served. Everybody gets their letter at the same time. And this is 968, but I round up and call it 1,000. You know, i- if there's a large portion in any community that declines, certainly there are other homes, maybe from prior years, that might call in. We do maintain what's called an alternate list, and those are homes also inside the noise contour, but they just haven't been done previously. It's not like we're gonna hold slots. One thing to be aware of is that this is phase 16, and next week at noise commission, we're probably gonna be introducing phase 17. So if they miss it this time, there is, there are future opportunities to sign up again. On the issue of foreclosures, my staff tries to work with the banks. If we can figure out which bank has the mortgage, we try to contact the bank officer and say, this home is eligible. Because some people may say, actually, those doors and windows might be considered one form of home improvement, and that may help with the, getting the home sold. Clearly, we're trying to reduce the decibels inside the home. But we do work with the banks and the mortgage officers to try to proceed with the sound insulation. I don't want you to think of vacancies as being reserved for Wooddale. We look at it as there's 1,000 slots and the people in Bensonville 3, Schiller Park 3, Schiller Park 4, and Wooddale 2 get first, um, get, get the first invitation.
So it will be those, I'm sorry. It will be those people, those towns that will be eligible for the ones that decline to go back into their, their villages or towns. Am I correct?
I got confused.
So there's a thousand homes, no, what I'm saying is there's a thousand homes you're saying
Right.
For those, all those towns.
Correct.
So if someone declines and there's less than 1,000, those towns right there will have a first crack to add those homes, whoever declined, into their town. It won't go to like Schiller Park.
No, that's not true, Alderman. So here's what happens. Let's say we invite 1,000 homes and we get five drops in Bensonville, five drops in Schiller Park, and five drops in Wooddale. So we have 15 openings. We are always maintained, because we have thousands or hundreds of homes, we're always maintaining an alternate list. And so we might fill those 15 slots with two homes from Rosemont, maybe a home from Norwich, a home from Bensonville. So we're gonna try to do 1,000 homes just to keep the pace of the program going, but it's not a Wooddale for Wooddale slot. Those 389 homes in Wooddale just get first come, first served.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you had your hand done?
I have my question answered.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
I wanna come back to the contour. To try to get a, so when the airport's built out, the FAA is gonna come and redo the contour. Kinda, in the construction world, as-built contour, so to speak. And then, and, and only then, if those contour lines change, like we, some of us believe they will, would something be done for the areas that the residents that came and talked about? Those issues would be addressed then?
Y- yes, Alderman. So as I mentioned, we've been doing noise contours for 30 years and we've been doing sound insulation for 15 years. In the 15 to 17 years that we've done sound insulation, we've actually worked under three different noise contours. And what the FAA has said is that when you're done, you will do the new noise contour and you have to then look another five years into the future. That timeframe is what we call build-out plus five, plus five years. And that's written into the record of decision. You will do this and it will look at this further future scenario. Clearly, if the boundaries of the noise contour change, we just keep going. We think we're done, and then what do you know, a new noise contour comes out and the patterns change or the nor, or the, or the percentages change on, we thought we were gonna use these runways, but it turns out we use these run, these other runways instead. And so that's why the noise contour keeps changing shape over these many years. And it is safe to assume that the noise contour will continue to change shape. And certainly, if those boundaries change, yes, we would pick up additional blocks.
And, and that's what I thought. But my, I guess my concern and, and what a lot of residents are gonna ask me, as, as the one sitting here will ask, if the build-out is scheduled to be 2020? So we wouldn't get a new contour until 2020?
That's correct.
Right.
So Alderman, this chart, what you're seeing is what the timeline is believed to be today. This runway is gonna open next October. The runway after that is on the South Airfield again, and this one's in late 2015. I can tell you that last year, there was a big announcement because the city and the airlines were not in agreement as to how to finish the OMP and how to fund the OMP. There were lawsuits, and in the end, there was a settlement agreement that was mediated by the Secretary of Transportation. And that was in about March of last year that then announcement was made, that a settlement was reached. A key part of the settlement was that the South Airfield would continue, but that we, the city, building the airport, would defer the North Airfield. And this has continued to, to be deferred. By next March, in about six months, the city will, as part of the settlement, they, they said within two years, the parties will come back to the table and resume negotiations. Because by that time, this runway will have been already designed and underway, and this one's already designed, I believe. And so next March, they're gonna come back and talk about this. Right now, the Western Terminal is deferred indefinitely. And that, that's, again, because of the, because of the airlines. But again, this is all gonna get revisited in the spring. But yes, this, this current schedule, this is 2013, this is, runways aren't built in a year. This is 2013, this is 2015, and these two are currently shown as 2020. And so your, answer to your question is, yes, by the time we hit build-out. And this schedule could change. It could move up, it could move back. That is way, way, way above my pay grade. But the current schedule is showing completion in 2020, and that's about the time, 2019, 2020, is when we would begin preparing the new noise contour.
Right. I was just trying to get a feel for, so nothing really is gonna happen outside of what you're doing now until after 2020, into 2021 or 2022? So the people that are, that have issues, A, can hope that your original contour is correct or closer to correct, and then that noise will tend to go away over time? Or they're gonna have to wait another eight, nine years to, to get some relief? Is that correct?
Like I, I mentioned earlier, the ONCC has requested that the FAA do an OMP timing change. So they're in the process of analyzing what the interim impacts are at our request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman, just one more thing. Many people in the airport community, many residents around the country, because 65 DNL is the national standard, many airports, including ours, hear from homeowners that do not believe 65 DNL is the right number. And I will tell you that that is, after all these many years of doing that, that is still actively discussed. And one of the things Jeanette mentioned is that the ONCC is a member of this research group called Partner. And Mayor Mulder, as the chair of the commission, also serves on another committee where the FAA is revisiting that national standard of 65 DNL. They have already initiated a, a five-year study. I believe we're in about year three. And what's been happening over the last two years is all the scientists are getting together to compare research, and they discuss, should it be 65, should it be 66, 68, 70? Should it be lower? Should it be 63, 61 DNL? That is actively being discussed. So don't think that the issue of 65 DNL is, is done, is, is off the table. That, that too, people, people in our industry do work on that topic as well.
No, I, I, I've read some of those papers and, and I know that this, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces, you know, the airplanes, the size, the engines, you know, passengers, cargo, a lot of that. I'm just trying to get an idea so that when residents ask me, I have an understanding. Or they can, people watching can get a better understanding of, of how everything works and how the, that, those timeframes relate to each other. So thank you for all this information.
Thank you, Aaron, and I really, honestly, I really knew, being on the south side of Irving Park, I knew build-out's 2020. I knew I wasn't getting any windows anytime soon.
Mayor, if I may, in closing, I'd just like to reiterate that ONCC continues to lobby Congress to lower their standards for the 65 DNL to include more homes.
Well, right after the election, I can guarantee you, whoever our new congressman is, we will have a nice letter for them. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, and Mayor, on behalf of both of our organizations, the Noise Commission and the city, we very much appreciate the opportunity to come to, talk to all of you. It's great that all of you are here. I'm kinda shocked. You're, you have 100% attendance, which is fantastic. And so we're just very fortunate to have this opportunity, so thank you again.
Thank you. And you guys, unless you wanna listen to the rest of the meeting, you can take off.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next on the agenda is a manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two reports on, one, the 2012 Street and Sidewalk Program. Hopefully, will be wrapped up late tomorrow afternoon. Two, Ryder Cup update. We are selling the banners that we had along Irving Park and Wooddale Road. We're almost out, so if any residents would like to buy a banner to ben, benefit the Bensonville-Wooddale Food Pantry, I would go online very soon as we're almost all out. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, the consent agenda. We have nine items on the consent agenda. If no objections, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Alderman Shockey?
I'd like number two taken off the consent.
Number two. Anything else? Then I entertain a motion, with the exception of number two, eight items.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
That passes. Next, I entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, an ordinance amending the City of Wooddale Stop Sign Ordinance, Chapter 15, Article 20, Sections 15.2004 of the City Code to include a stop sign at the intersection of Grove Avenue and Center Street. Item number three, approval of pay request, partial number three, partial MQ Sewer and Water Contracts Incorporated for the fiscal year 2013 Water Main Replacement Program in a not-to-exceed amount of $442,691.90. Item number four, approval of pay request, partial number two, RW Dunhaman Company for the Metro Parking Lot Improvements in a not-to-exceed amount of $311,349.63. Item number five, approval of pay request, partial number one, ALAM Concrete Contractors Incorporated for the Stonemont Street Reconstruction in a not-to-exceed amount of $83,970. Item number six, approval of change order number two, Argon Electric Company Incorporated for the South Waste Water Treatment Plant Generator Replacement in a not-to-exceed amount of $18,469. Item number seven, approval of pay request, partial number five, Maximum, Maxim Construction Corp. For the Waste Wa, North Waste Water Treatment Plant Upgrades, Phase 1A Project Not-To-Exceed $434,749.16. Item number eight, approval of pay request, partial number three, HR Green Irving Park Road-Wooddale Road Intersection Safety Improvement Phase in a not-to-exceed amount of $44,379.82. Item number nine, approval of pay request, partial number three, PLODI Construction Incorporated for the 2012 Street Improvement Program in a not-to-exceed amount of $687,207.36. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
That passes. Next, committee chairman, planning and zoning, Alderman Winger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I have no report.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Coles?
I have no report, sir.
Thank you.
No report, Mayor.
Public Works, Alderman Wesley, thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Shockey?
No report, sir.
Okay, under Other Business, we have item number two of the consent agenda. A resolution, the City of Wooddale authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Lakota Group for the development of a comprehensive entry, entrance and roadway signage plan. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Shockey?
I won't go through it again, but you understand. I think we have the talent in town to do this without having to pay $15,000. That's it.
Thank you. Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
No.
That passes. Next, approval list of bills, October 18th and November 1st, 2012. Alderman Shockey?
I have a list of bills of, uh, November 1st.
And October 18th.
I did not get a copy of the October 18th.
You have it, Brad? That was in, uh, it was in the previous packet. I, I believe we didn't have the meeting.
Hi, thank you, sir. Okay, the bills for Oc- October 18th. General Fund, $227,563.3. Motor Fuel Tax Fund, $4,938.44. Tourism Fund, $4,343.80. Narcotics Fund, $300.60. Capital Projects Fund, $72,717.65. Computer Parking Lot Fund, $729.12. Sanitation Fund, $78,573.92. The Water and Sewer Capital Projects, $61,395.29. Water and Sewer Fund, $63,749.10 for a grand total of $514,310.95. If that in the form of a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on that one? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley? Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
That passes. Go ahead.
And a list of the bills for Oc- to November 1st. The General Fund, $93,320.95. Road and Bridge Fund, $1,498.16. Motor Fuel Tax Fund, $138. Tourism Fund, $1,307.15. Capital Projects Fund, $817,057.18. Computer Parking Lot Fund, $2,398. Sanitation Fund, $50. Water and Sewer Capital Projects, $912,807.92. Water and Sewer Fund, $126,429.96. And that does include, by the way, $115,353 to the DePage County Water Commission. That's for a total of $1,955.75.7.32. That's in the form of a motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
That's the end of my report.
That passes, thank you. We have no items to be referred, we do need executive session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the minutes and collective bargaining. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.